Collins, me and the downtown council to order. Please stand with me and have a moment of silence. Please join with me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one adjustment. Our first order of business should actually be the election of vice mayor.
Make a motion we elect our Ann Stinson the vice mayor.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Better not be. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, but I like so.
Once again, I wish you continued good health. Good exercise and healthy diet.
Hey, you notice he didn't ask, is it anybody else?
Just fine as long as the mayor is.
Ain't broke, don't fix it.
All right, do we have any delegations from the public? Okay, very good. We have no delegations from the public tonight, so let's move into consent calendar. If that was on the consent calendar, considered routine, will be approved by one motion. Any items can be removed from the calendar at the request of a member of council. It may be voted on separately. What you have in your council package are the minutes of the town council meeting held on 11 June. The bill sheet and additions should have been passed out.
Just a quick question on the police report. What are these out of town calls? Did you have them last month? They're just assisting other, um, other departments?
Gotcha. How many, how many out of town calls do you see there?
Fifteen. Let's, usually it's certainly.
Right, when we need them.
Absolutely.
Probably most of them. They're pretty good, aren't they?
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, but I like so. Motion carries.
With corrections.
With corrections. All right, town manager's report.
Just a couple items to break you up to date. We did start our water replacement, replacement of water lines on Rock Hill. We replaced 348 feet with new Dr. Lyre. Service has haven't been connected yet. They're still connected to the old line, but they would be connected this week. This is one of the lines that's been a problem for years, multiple breaks, constant maintenance. So we think that is probably what it needed the most, and we're going to continue to do that as we move along. Talked about the shutters. We did, uh, the guys did refinish the old shutters on the town hall and install them last week. We ended up having to rent for safety reasons. I felt like we needed something other than ladders, so we rented a lift. It was $200 a day, and we managed to get all of the upper floors in one day. So they were installed in two days. That saved us about $6,000. And I think that looked really good for what we're going on. You might have heard about this, but I thought I'd let you know in case you do. Now, about two weeks ago, there was an incident at the airport where a plane came in from Ashboro. They were coming to meet the folks at Family Dollar. And yeah, a truck had landing gear on the plane, and when it landed, their landing gear folded up. So the guy had to do a, well, they landed, worked our good, was lucky. He didn't seem to feel like it was that big a deal, but I'm telling you, he skidded about 150 feet on the runway. Anything could have happened, but he's, he's fine. FAA was notified, they'd been having to inspect the plane. We went out and helped him that day, took Tony and a couple guys in the back over and drug it basically off the runway so it wouldn't be an obstruction. They're coming to get it this week.
Any damage to the runway?
A little bit, and I discussed it with the adjuster. He said he would come back and look at it. Prop, when the prop struck the runway, it took some chunks out. The actual skid itself didn't hurt anything.
The runway's still usable?
Yeah, it's okay. The reason I bring it up is this weekend, we had a situation where somebody reported it. Police went out there and the blue lights were riding up down looking. Nobody knew anything about it, but I thought everybody knew about it. In case you hear about it, that's where it belongs. We had the home over here inspected across from the library here. Asked the, had to send Ryan a roll of the letter to get the building inspector to inspect it. He went by inspector and gave us a report. I don't know how to say this. It wasn't a very extensive report. He basically said that the front porch needed to be repaired and the doors needed to be shut and locked up.
Did he go inside?
He did not go inside, and he didn't go anywhere other than standing out front. So I asked him about that, and, you know, we talked about the situation that we've got where the county doesn't have, directly in Old Field, they don't have a property maintenance code per se. So Dean said he was not authorized to do that. He couldn't do that because he runs the risk of liability by not notifying owners. In this situation, we've got, we don't have any owners, basically. The owners are deceased. The daughter who inherited the property is basically abandoned it. There's no answer for her on anything. Taxes are on both the county and the town. He suggested testing that, and I think, I think they may have some information for us if we can review. Can't do it without, of course, but it may help us. About, something about a warrant from a judge.
Yep, and I'll be glad. I have done that before in other localities. So basically, what happens is, in essence, since Mr. Smith is a government employee, they, just like police officers, can't go in a building without probable cause and a search warrant. And so what we have to do is we would have to go before a magistrate and use the condition of the outside of the house to give the magistrate probable cause to issue a search warrant for the inside of the house. And I have done that before. It can be done pretty easily, just scheduling the time for Mr. Smith to go up there with me and perhaps one other person from the town and getting the, for the magistrate to do it.
Now, Mayor, question for the town attorney. A month or two ago, I thought I wrote in paper that the town of Blackstone is paying the building inspector $50 a shot to, um,
Yep.
enforce their maintenance code.
That is rental inspections.
Rental inspections.
Rental inspections, but what the town of Blackstone did is it's essentially a pass-through fee, and I was going to actually suggest it tonight because it's not only with rental inspections specifically, but it's for all inspections. It's something that the, um, building code official had passed on to the town and asked them to pass. So essentially, the town passes on that fee to the landlord. So one thing I was going to ask tonight is that you all allow me to advertise for a public hearing to update the ordinance we have on that so that we can make sure that our fee structure is consistent with Blackstone and that they're operating the same line. The other thing we need to do too, in that regard that I was going to bring up in my report, is we also need to be consistent. Mr. Smith is enforcing the 2012 Property Maintenance Code, or the most consistent property, the most recent property maintenance code. And then he's going to actually go to 2018, I believe, in September or so. So in conjunction with the inspection fees, we just need to update our ordinance with that too. And so I was going to ask for permission to do both of those things in the, um, you know, we could advertise it for a public hearing and have it put in there.
Who is this Mr. Smith?
He is the new building code official for Nottaway.
You're talking about Dean Lewis?
Dean Lewis.
That's all right.
I think, in-
Lewis Smith, same.
Then Smith, isn't he the magistrate? See, is that a magistrate down there?
There's a magistrate named Smith.
Ballot guy?
So, so for clarification purposes, you need a motion to authorize a public hearing to update our rental inspection code?
Well, I need authorization to do a public hearing to update the town's fee structure for inspections, and then I need authorization for a public hearing to update the year of the property maintenance code that's going to be enforced in the town.
Okay. Now, I think this is where I get, I have problems with this stuff because it feels like we're spinning the wheels again here. You know, we've, we've been through all this stuff before. We've been told that our building inspector cannot force anybody to do anything, basically the way I read it. I don't understand that because they can go up and condemn it and call it a dangerous building, but then they can't make anybody do anything. And we can't seem to make anybody do anything because now he's saying because they don't have a property maintenance code unless what you're talking about, they're going to adopt it.
Well, the town does have one, and it goes the, um, you know, the International Property Maintenance Code, and then also with the State Building Code. So, you know, while the county may not have one, it is still enforceable in the town limits.
But, but who's the one that makes that determination as far as the town? Who's authorized?
What, it would have to be just by, you know, our past experience with the county of Nottaway is, they would be the one that would make the determination about what is, you know.
Okay, well, there's some confusion there.
Yeah, and then what they would do though, instead of, other localities with their building inspectors, the building inspector will go out, do what needs to be done, send out the letters, go to court, at least with the town attorney. But what our process has always been with Nottaway County is that they're the ones that, you know, go out and say this is a code violation, but then they send their report to the town, and then it's on either you or I to, usually you, to send out that first letter, and then it will come to me for enforcement. And essentially, I have to subpoena the building inspector as a witness. I'm assuming that's the way it would still be with the new building inspector.
So what, as, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, there's the building code and the property maintenance code. The county has a building code, but no property maintenance code. We have both. We contract with the county to enforce the building code. We could also contract with the building inspector himself to enforce our property maintenance code. The county's not going to adopt a property maintenance code because that opens up a can of worms for the county.
Which I think is where the $50 comes in.
Yeah, right.
And he's saying that he will do that, I guess.
And pass that through.
But we pay the county the $50 and the county reimburses him, right? Is that how you read it?
No doubt, he's working for us.
You'd be working for us?
Yeah, he's always working for us until-
That's the way I understood it when we talked today.
I talked to him this afternoon.
Okay.
And he said-
That's per inspection.
Per inspection.
Per, per dwelling. So if it's, for instance, a property that has upstairs and downstairs rental, separate rentals, it would be $100 to inspect both. It's just per dwelling. But he said he would do it, turn around, that time is about a day. If we notify him of something that needs to be inspected, call him, he could be out the next day. He would charge the town $50, and it will be the town's responsibility to get it from the owner of the property.
Councilman Bowlin has passed along for informational purposes the rental inspection checklist from the code, right, the property maintenance code.
That's what Dean emailed me today.
So this, this comes from the, and there's also a checklist, Blackstone's working on a checklist also, and she's got it on her computer, but we can, we can put that in committee, and you guys can figure it out. Want to add something more to it?
Which is a third, like, piece entirely.
Yeah, we would need to, the town does not currently have the rental inspection ordinance, so if you all want me to, I can draft that up too. It has the regular property maintenance code and then the rental inspections, which the town of Blackstone does have the rental inspections ordinance, and it's an added layer that would give the-
Unenforced.
The building inspector will be the one that enforces it.
You can call him and he'd give the $50 to go inspect the location.
So we would basically subcontract out to him to be our enforcement officer for this.
Right, that's, and that's part of what he did with Blackstone too, with the rental inspection, so.
So do you think he's willing to do that? Because what we want, I think what we want is to be able to control some of those rental property and what is going in there, and what kind of shape it's in before they go in there.
Yep.
So somebody's got to be able to say, you can't rent it yet until you do this.
I can't speak to that, maybe Wendy can. But we would, from my standpoint, we would need to do the additional infrastructure ordinance on top of what we already have specifically related to rental units. I already have a draft of it that I've done, yeah.
Well, I think, well, let me ask you this. We're, we're, you're talking like going in prior to renting the property? Is there any way that you can go in while the dwelling is, you know, leased to the town?
Yes, you can. The rental inspections ordinance, and I'm just recalling this off the top of my head, but there are a few different types of inspections that you go through with the rental inspection ordinance. If I remember correctly, one of them is like, you know, the regular probable cause inspection, like it's a little-
Like you have complaint or something like that.
He's going in, but then on top of that, and I'm just recalling this off the top of my head, you know, there's also more of a standard inspection mechanism part of it too.
Okay, so what we're seeking then is authorization for a public hearing to update the property maintenance code, adopt a town fee structure, or update the town fee structure, and to publicize a public hearing for rental inspection ordinance.
Correct.
With the rental inspection ordinance, would every rental property be automatically, or you just pick and choose what you're-
What you do in this, that's a very good question because that has come up before. Case law in the statute pretty much say, or the enabling statute for it, they say that the town has to designate a rental inspection district. And that rental inspection district or districts cannot encompass the whole town. But if I recall correctly, it just says one district cannot encompass the whole town. But you can have multiple districts that would in essence encompass, encompass the whole town, which pretty much defeats the purpose. But basically what it says is, you have to come up with a district, and you have to make certain signings within that district, you know, that it's for the public health and safety of the tenants, and that the area has been known for white, and the district's boundaries would be defined in the ordinance. And a whole town cannot be under district.
See, but you could have multiple districts.
But that's a problem.
East and west, but then-
Well, I'm thinking-
East and straight.
Your rentals are here and there and spread out, and there is no district. Now, we've got some rental places that you could make them a district.
Yes.
But again, the problem that I, as I see it, is about that, it's one or two houses on the block. It could be here, it might be here, and then you come to the next block, and you've got one, and that's the problem. So I don't know how we do that.
I think it can be worked, but, yeah, I mean, and that's what-
I can look up Blackstones because that was an issue in Blackstone, and I had helped draft the district.
We work on this model on them, and it's already there and it works.
Well, how do they operate, changing the subject, how do they operate on a single dwelling, you know, or renting? You know what I'm saying? Or less, you have-
Single family.
Single family dwelling.
You have a single family dwelling, and you've got three families living in it. How do you handle that?
Go ahead.
This I found out today as well. I've been multitasking. They have it classified now as to people per square feet. It's not listed as amount of bedrooms in the home, amount of bathrooms, so on and so forth. It's how many people per square feet of the dwelling. So that's the way it is coded now.
Okay.
Well, how do, how do, next question was how do you enforce, that's the question.
I guess when you had issues.
Yeah.
How long would it become some public nuisance and public welfare, uh, health hazard, I guess?
Now, my concern, Mayor, is by taking all three of these at once, we might be confusing the two issues. The first issue is inspecting with the, with the building maintenance code.
True.
All property. The second issue is rentals. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the, the rental ordinance is more for the protection of the renters rather than-
Yes.
So I'm, I'm fine with both, but as long as we take them separately and ensure that we're-
As all the way you can do.
Right, sure, absolutely, but make, ensuring that we're-
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but we, you know, we try, I was, we had a call one day where some lady hit that flying into her house, and then they got up in the attic, it was guano everywhere. I mean, that wasn't her fault.
Right.
You know, it seems like one of them had suffered, and, and they're calling us for a response. And that basically was a health hazard, she had to move out.
And there's multiple locations like that in Nottaway.
And if you're going to protect the people, you've got to have something to do with it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so you want to take these as individual motions then?
I think we would need to.
All right. So need a motion to authorize a public hearing to update the property maintenance code. No move? All right, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we need a motion to up that, update the town fee structure for the property inspections or the-
Correct, just the property. Well, just leave it a property.
Property, yeah.
Okay, so we-
Make a motion.
All right.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, but I like so. Motion carries. And then we need a motion to authorize a public hearing on adopting a rental inspection ordinance. Now, you won't provide that ordinance as part of the, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we need a motion.
No move.
Second.
May I say, let's don't rush this, say, we don't like having all three next month.
No, I mean, we need time to- We want, we want the public to be able to digest everything.
Property maintenance code, I don't see a problem with it because it's just a document.
So should we wait and look at the, uh, the code or whatever the town attorney presents us before having a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
So, so, must tonight, you want to withdraw your motion?
Withdraw it.
All right, very good. So that, we will wait on until we get the draft, the Blackstone, or the Blackstone ordinance, and involve ourselves on that.
Yes.
All right, town manager, do you have anything else?
Uh, one more thing, speaking of money, spending money. You may, you were called with budgets for a new garbage truck this year. We've gotten three bids, we reviewed all of them, Tony's been involved more than I have because he understands the equipment and what he feels like we need. We decided to purchase a new international truck, or try to, with a Cobra career loading system. I mean, three, this truck had all the necessary equipment and are familiar with international and the availability of near by service, which is an area that leads us to want to purchase this truck. Total cost is $127,094. It's about a four to six month turnaround on, uh, with the ore to delivery, so we've got some time. But what I'd like to go do is go in, get a motion maybe to accept this bid, and then we'll go ahead and start the listing, look for financing and as well as continue to rule.
You, you've already got that budgeted, right?
Yeah, we budgeted for that, and payments, of course.
Sure. What do you call that, man?
The piece of paper?
Oh, it's a book.
It's an international chassis. International chassis with Cobra loads.
That's true. Chassis.
And how long is this going to last us?
Ten years is, is the average life. We usually get at least 15 when we take care of our stuff. And then there's one that's got to be taken out of service, it's, it's, uh, about fall, fall.
Okay, we have a, we have a budgeted item for a garbage truck, an international chassis with a Cobra loading system. Do we have a motion to purchase it?
No move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, but I like so. Motion carries.
So we're in.
All right, do you need that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can give it to him.
All right.
Okay, well- Town manager's report.
Yeah, mainly what I was going to give my report about is what we've already discussed, so that's good. And then just going over enforcement things and working on a few other things for the town. Nothing, unless you all have any questions, you know, the biggest thing with it.
So any questions for the town attorney? Very good. Mayor's report. You have got your committee aside, it should have been in your package. I see they're not in my package, but I guess they figured.
Did you do it?
Yeah, I do, yeah. I have culled down the committees, down to three, for a reason. We've got a finance committee, a personnel committee, obviously, we have changed the chairs. Mr. Stenson has agreed to be the chairman of the finance committee, and Mr. Reed has agreed to be the secretary chair of the personnel committee, and we have added Mr. Miskelik to finance. We have taken the others and consolidated them into a community development committee because pretty much everything that we do falls on the community, the personnel, finance, and community development. The community development committee is going to carry everybody, with the exception of Ms. Stenson. Oh, I did have everyone, I don't know, I'm sorry. Thought I left somebody out, anyway. Mainly because most of the heavy lifting takes place in committee, and that's where it needs to take place, where we can have time to have the frank discussions and things that we need to talk about, and start establishing and laying out plans of action, courses of action, and that we can move forward on. We can try, if it doesn't work, we can always go back to the multiple committees, but I think, I think this is a good effort to, to limit people's, the demands on people's time. Nottaway County, the double ACP, met on June 12th, they had asked me to come and speak. I went and gave them a briefing on the town crew, put it in PowerPoint, and I can send it to you if you're interested in the, basically, the background and looking at the last two years, some of your actions over the last two years of council, what you've done, and how we see things moving forward. We did get questions on Luckstone, and I answered those as best I could, and used that opportunity to outreach to Luckstone too, because it was one of the, one of the gentlemen attending was a neighbor of the New Corry, and, and he's interested in visiting. And Luckstone now is going to reach out to the residents that name, that are adjacent to the designated area, and they're going to invite them to Richmond to see the plant down there. Particularly festival was on June twenty-second, it rained real hard. I think for those of you that were there, several people got stuck, uh, had several pictures, actually people stuck in the mud.
It was great timing.
It was, it was.
Took your red girl.
Uh, yeah, exactly. Uh, we also had questions earlier about land grants, uh, they've got a talking paper in there on land grants by the state and the federal government. They, uh, there, there will be no grants issued in the state without funding, uh, land grants, uh, for this coming cycle. We missed the last cycle, we could be running about two weeks. So maybe after January, we'll know about the, the year after. The federal side though has got some grants that, uh, and I was surprised to learn about seventy-five percent of the grants go to localities. Not necessarily to, uh, to larger institutions, but to towns looking to do things, so that may be an opportunity, of course. Uh, normally at this point we would go to, do you have any questions for me?
Uh, Mayor, do you have some questions or comments about the committee assignments?
Yes, sir.
Um, first one is, is, is regarding personnel committee. Um, our code does identify the town manager as the chair of the personnel committee.
That is correct.
I would recommend having co-chairs.
That is, well, that is.
So that were in mind.
That is correct, and I, I stand corrected on that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
And then the, um, second issue is more of a, well, a couple logistical concerns about the community development committee. The first is, is it too broad in its task?
I don't know that we have enough challenges, um. Every challenge that we have is still gonna have to be discussed by the, the council. We don't have enough challenges to keep each committee busy and my thoughts are that lumping everything together, you've already got people on board, you can coordinate. Doing some of the background work before we come to the regular meeting, basically have everything locked and loaded before you go. I also envision, and that's gonna be up to the co-chairs, of course, but I also envision that you might have an opportunity to bust up into some committees of this element as, as the, uh, like a task force kind of thing.
So this would be more, because it's all seven members of council, would be more along the lines of a council work session?
Yes, it could be, or, or a committee of the whole.
Right.
But, but, uh, I'll have somebody else. I guess not.
Um. I don't miss.
No, that's fine. Um, okay. Simply because we don't need to have a fire department to manage it again.
Right.
There's not gonna be enough work here for three people.
Absolutely.
Uh, whereas with all the bigger challenges, economic development and what we have discussed consistently, I mean, that's, that's always a challenge. Uh, that, uh, that to me is probably the most important, one of the most important jobs that we've got. And you've got a lot of good ideas, other people have good ideas, let's put the money together outside of the regular meeting where you can throw these things back and forth and that's where those work sessions come into play.
Okay.
But again, if you've got a small specialized task, for example, uh, the emergency services thing that I mentioned to you in an email.
Right.
That, that's kind of a small specialized task and you've got the background for that, uh, to, to take that and run with it. And, um, and you can literally create a subcommittee to, to work that issue, which you get.
Perfect. Um, I guess then my only question would be, will we, I'll direct it to the, to the chair. Uh, will we have, um, standing, uh, community meetings, uh, pre-scheduled?
Um, I was just gonna try to get everybody together and find out when is the best time for everybody to attend.
Okay.
You know, and then maybe have it maybe a week before the council meeting, so.
The work session.
Yeah. So that way we have everything ready by the time we go into the council meeting. But I'm new, so if anybody's got any ideas, throw them at me.
I'm new blood.
I'm new blood, but, uh, you know. It's my first radio on this. I, I've served on others, but.
Radio, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Then not everybody has to be there, obviously, and that, that's.
Well, I was getting your insight there, and bear in mind the numbers of the people that are attending, we need to know that kind of advanced. Because we've got, we've got no fire, like, we've got to advertise it as well, right?
Yes.
More than two board members?
Yes. But that's okay, it keeps it in public.
That's okay, we just need to, we gotta advertise it.
But you got more than two, you gotta keep minutes.
Have to keep minutes.
Okay. Learn something there every day?
And that's a good thing.
And personnel would be kind of, you, you advertise it and then you open it and close it because it's personnel and going executive session to come out and prove it, so it was, it's just a formality. That's what you have to do.
Okay, did that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay. All right.
It's worth a try.
Okay, uh, I don't anticipate any committee reports, we've just reorganized basically, so, uh, continue, unless anybody's got anything to say. All right, we'll go into continuing business, uh, you have the informational item that, uh, Ms. Bowen, uh, provided. Is there any else continuing business?
Mayor, I do have a piece of continuing business, the, um, last month I handed out a motion to begin executing the spotlight light abatement procedure.
Yes.
Um, and relevant background information, was there any other, any other comments, questions, concerns, has everyone had a chance to review that?
Would the, uh, with the property management thing, this update, would that address that?
No.
Well, let me, let me ask you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, well, I was gonna say, um, I had had a chance to review the spotlight, spotlight procedure. And the difference is that with that procedure versus all of the other procedures we've done or that we have. Is that the town could actually acquire the property and I know that there has been some interest in doing that before. Instead of just the authority to make the people fix it or fixing ourselves and putting a lien on it, then waiting till the lien gets filled with the seller's assets.
So we can acquire it without a lien?
Correct, yes, using the spotlight procedures, um, as set forth in the code, we could actually acquire title to the property, which is something none of our other ordinances or mechanisms that we have will allow us to do.
Then it's also in a cost, right?
Well, and to build on that, if we were to begin to acquire property, um, there is a new, um, relatively new program for localities called land banks.
Yes.
Which basically allows localities to renovate and sell property and then use that money for acquiring additional property to start to reduce light.
Is that outside of the DCR structure or is that?
DCR.
Yeah, conservation resources, land banks.
Right, yes.
That's.
So what you handed out, I believe, was land grants, this is a land bank. Oh, well, yeah. So this is not correct, it is, it was outside of that structure.
Yes, it's outside of that structure, okay.
That's correct, so a land bank is essentially. It was, um, created, oh, probably about three or four years ago, um, the city of Danville took a, took the lead on it. Basically what it does is allows a locality, and I may be wrong on specifics, but essentially form a nonprofit in order to acquire properties. Or, or form some sort of authority to acquire properties.
Yeah.
For the purpose of renovating and selling.
But do they give you money for it? I mean, it's grant money, right?
No, no, sir.
It's our money.
Our money.
It's our money at first and then we, it's. We recoup it through selling the properties.
Okay, all right.
I just Googled it. Question.
Stuttered it.
What's, what's the, what's the, uh, website it is?
Um, communityprogress.net. It's the first one I checked.
This was an urban land bank, right?
Yeah.
That's correct.
All right.
Um, and if we want the town attorney to look into it, I'm sure the, in fact, I've reached out to a member of Danville City Council. Um, and he directed me to, I believe, their town attorney, or their city attorney, so if we wanted the town attorney to talk to their city attorney and get, get all the details. But essentially it would be a way to help to start to recoup the costs and it would work well in conjunction with the spotlight abatement process.
Well, let's look at it like, if, if we got a piece of property that we're gonna be looking. Number one, most likely we're gonna have to chunk our money into it, because the main reason why these people are not putting their money into it is they don't have the money.
Right.
So what we're doing, we're taking taxpayers' money and putting it in that property and either putting liens on their property, right? And then.
Yes.
Okay.
Or acquiring the property.
Yeah, but how much money does it take to acquire that property? If the house is worth a hundred, I'll say a hundred thousand dollars, and we put twenty thousand dollars, can we up and sell the property and try to regroup ours and regroup, regroup ours with the interest? And attorney fees or whatever it is, and then they get their, they get their money back, you know, because we haven't kicked them out.
Well, if it's worth a hundred thousand as is and we put twenty thousand into it, I assume that would be worth more than.
Twenty-five percent, that's twenty-five percent is what, what you put in, or more or less, or not quite, but.
When you said put in, you mean for repairs?
Yeah.
If we put twenty-five thousand dollars in and make the house look nice and nice, uh, and you, and they can't pay it, the town, we didn't spend taxpayers' money to fix their house.
Well, within two years.
Purchase it before we get to that point?
Well, it's, it, it's very open-ended. So with this, um, procedure, we would send them, let me, uh, first step is we determine if the property is blighted, um, council passes a motion. We send them a, um, a letter that basically says, give us your procedure for, for abating light. They can either send us a procedure which includes either giving us the property, fixing the property, or asking the town to fix the property at their cost. Um, or if they don't respond, we then send them a proposal, this is what we're gonna do. Um, and then we either, um, they either do it or we can, uh, then acquire it through eminent domain. So it gives them the option.
It's gotta, it's gotta be a percentage on taking it into the domain, I would think, when you think, uh, you know, I don't know. You know, you just can't, just cause, say for instance, the, the front porch needs to be fixed when I, you know, considered blind, it's gonna fall in. You know, how, how can you, you know, you could take your front porch off, yes. But, you know, I don't know if you understand where I'm coming from, I, you know, what I'm saying is, we're taking taxpayers' money to fix this property. But we get, we've got, you know, we, we've given too much money away in the last, what? Last six, eight years, I know. What it cost us to take the, um, theater down, what it cost us to take the Beale house down, what it cost to take the Wilbur house down, you know? And then we, and we lucked out on this case over here, on Pennsylvania.
But had we had this process in place and the owners of the theater or the owners of the Beale house or the owners down here decided to give us the property instead of us having to go in and take it down, we would've saved money. And we would've owned the property that we then could've turned around and sold to someone else and created, maybe come out even.
Well, that's what happened over here on Pennsylvania, the guy took it down and we, and we paid the guy, you know, in so many words, you know, we paid the guy, you know, for the removal because it's a lot cheaper cost. For him to do it than us, or is the DEQ and stuff like that?
Okay.
Mr. Taylor?
I'm still processing everything. I'm sort of like Robbie, you take taxpayers' money to pay to fix somebody's house, correct? And then at some point in time, you acquire the house and then resell it after you fix it to get your money back.
Well, I think you acquired it first.
Yes.
Okay.
You acquire it first, then you fix it up and then you sell it and return your money.
Yeah.
That's the idea.
Practically speaking, our problem generally is that we don't hear from anybody on the properties that we own. So.
In which case we, if we don't hear back from them, then, I'm sorry, it's been a little while since I've read this. We can.
Where, where did this, where did this code come from?
Um, this was one of the.
The mail?
No, this is, uh, DHCD, when they came and met with us, this was one of the proposals that they.
Yeah, that was one of the things they threw out.
They gave to us, um. I mean, there's the eminent domain process, there's, um, liens and such, making improvements in the liens, which is the normal process. But essentially it gives us another tool in our toolbox.
Yeah, not, not, it's not something we would have to use.
Exactly, right, no, absolutely.
Whichever situation fits.
Right.
If you acquired it and you find out you're not gonna be able to get your money out of no matter how much fixing you do, are you stuck or are you tearing it down?
Well, no, because you're tearing it, and you may lose some money, you know, or you may make money, don't know.
Once you acquire it, you can tear it down too.
That's what I'm asking, you should've torn it down and it's fixed.
Well, sometimes.
I've been asked to tear that down.
Well, I do like the idea of owning it at the end of the day.
Right.
Children, we have spent the money on, but we still don't.
We don't own the land and the only way we'll recoup the, the, uh, the money or any part of the money is through the lien on the land, which is now gonna sell because it's got a hefty lien on it.
Right about that, at least we would own.
Own.
If we, if we demolished the house.
You own the land.
We would at least own the land.
All right, what was he saying about lien, if there's a lien on it, can you sell it if there's a lien on the land?
Yeah. Legally, you can try to sell it, whoever's got the lien can, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the problem there would be we would have to satisfy any liens against us to acquire it. I wonder whether it would be a problem, but it could be.
And we can work with county to, I mean, county and the IRS are the only two other entities.
Mostly go pay taxes, yes.
And the county would probably work with us to.
Detective, have an opportunity, did you, did you have a chance to review this?
Yes.
And you're happy with it?
I'm, I'm fine with it legally because it just gives us another, you know, way to commit light. So it doesn't obligate us legally to anything if it's something where the town council decides that it would be to their advantage to.
It's one way to go.
Yeah, it's one. How many white properties we got in town for two, Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know either, but it's.
It's a lot, I know.
It's a lot to know. But there again, and this is another thing that I'm always talking about, is who makes the decision whether it's blighted or not? It's a.
Well, for.
If you've got a checklist, something to go on, but if you or I walk on it and say, I don't like the way this looks, and somebody says.
Now, with.
What gives you the right to make that decision, you know? Somebody's gotta do it.
For the purposes of this, the. The chief executive, according to the code, uh, makes the determination. According to our code, the chief executive officer is the mayor. Um, so the mayor makes the initial determination.
Are you sure you won't give me that authority?
I, I didn't give it to you, a previous council that made you chief executive gave it to you.
It does say.
The chief mayor's right with it.
It does say the chief, chief executive or designated.
Or designated.
Of the locality, so it does.
And then once the, so the chief executive or designated determines if the property is blighted, um, and then there's a definition of light property. The chief executive or designated sends notice to the owner of record specifying why the property is blighted. Owner or owners of record shall have thirty days from the date the notice is sent in which to respond in writing with spotlight abatement plan to address the blight within a reasonable time. If the owner or owners of record fail to respond within thirty day period with a written spotlight abatement plan that is acceptable to the chief executive, a request can be made of council to declare the property blighted. Council passes an ordinance declaring the property blighted and then the town undertakes one of two options. First, the town establishes its own spot, spotlight abatement plan for the property, of which can include repair of blighted property by owner, purchase of blighted property for repair or disposition, acquisition of blighted property through eminent domain process, um, within certain limitations. acquisition of blighted property through eminent domain process within certain limitations. Second step, we then send a writ notice to the owner. Third step, if, if, if they approve the, the process, we carry out the approved plan. Fourth step is the town can, shall tax lien on all property so repaired or acquired under a spot, under an approved spot light abatement plan.
Okay.
Um, well, I repeat, I do like the idea of, if the town goes through all that process, the town actually owning the property. Because we, that's a step, I don't exactly understand how you would decide, if you were to purchase, how, how much would you pay whatever the tax liens are? Or how does the eminent domain part of it?
Can I just give it to you?
So, I would need to look at that, because there's a very thin line that's been drawn in case law between when would you have to pay, you know, the fair market value for it, and when you can take the property. So I would need to look into that to make sure we're doing the correct thing there. In terms of just a regular purchase, that would just be, you know, whatever price the county, or the town negotiated with the owner. But generally speaking, when you're doing eminent domain, it would be the fair market value of the property, which usually...
It's...
Usually, it's the tax assessed value is what I generally use as a rule of thumb. And then, if it's over, I believe, five thousand dollars, then you have to get an appraisal of it.
Now, that's through eminent domain. The other option, as the town attorney just mentioned, is to either give it to us or sell it as for like a dollar set.
True.
Much like the, the bank that gave, gave the house down the road to the county a couple of years ago.
Now, we have done, that's always an option though. You know, we tried to do that before, we done it before, so, you know, but yeah, that's an option too. The same problem arises, at least in my experience. As with other things, people just don't respond. So in order to purchase, they really have to get their names on their deed, and that's the problem we run into. But eminent domain, you know, they can just not respond.
So did I hear you say you wanted to take this back and look at that, that fine line area? Or are you happy with it?
No, I'm fine with the way it's adopted. You know, the way it is now, it would just be a question of if we had to do it, making sure that we're doing it in the right way.
Okay.
With that, Mayor, my motion is...
Wait, wait, hold on, did you have any comments?
No, I was just reading a little bit about the land bank, and I come to this point where it says, "Federal grants funded through those neighborhood stabilization program may provide acquisition, maintenance, and operating funds for land bank, banks for a maximum of ten years." So...
That's a good problem.
Yeah. It says it's not, but it is bad, bad, but...
Okay, so my motion is to strongly request the mayor work with the town manager, town attorney, and all relevant town staff to be in to execute the spot light abatement procedure authorized by code and Virginia Section thirty-six dash forty-nine point one. By one, establishing a prioritized list of the most blighted property in town, including especially those in the business districts. Two, sending notices to the owner of record of each property on said list, specifying why the property is blighted and requesting a spotlight plan. And three, reporting to council a list of the properties identified, date notices sent to property owners, and any responses received to date.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? We have a motion on the floor? No, we gotta do it three times. Do we have a second? All right, that motion is presented. Guys, this is a lot, rather, give it like a second.
Okay, well, just for clarification, that motion was simply to strongly request the mayor, so the mayor and the town manager can simply just do it on their own with my strong request.
Okay. All right.
Is it feasible, I'm thinking about those, is it feasible for us way to develop some sort of map of the town and just take it a chunk at a time, rather than, I feel like we're just...
Overruled.
You know, looking at the whole town, and then it becomes overwhelming. If the business district is the place we want to start, then let's start there.
For this spot blighted.
Or wherever, yeah, the word we can't say anymore.
Does that work, quite, spot light thing?
SBA.
What, what's the difference in that to say this building needs to be taken down, the inspector, it's no good, it's got to be taken? You're running the same problems with it, aren't you?
But the number two, that's an up to order.
There gonna be, there gonna be all kinds of things that'll happen. You gonna look at it and say, "It's not worth doing these things." And, and I go back to my original point about the building inspector, when he condemns the building, he condemned the building. I don't know how much more clean you can get than it's been condemned. In other words, the old school said, "You can't fix it."
Yeah.
And as, as non-experts and non-contractors and all, we rely on what he says, he or she, Don Dyer, that says, "It's condemned, it's dangerous building." That's the other thing, what he calls a dangerous. To me, something needs to be done if it's dangerous, and it needs to be done damn. Not six months from now, it's dangerous.
Absolutely, and with that...
And that's where I run into the issues with this stuff, you know?
And, and that's exactly what we did with the building that had no roof next to Rogers. We had it condemned, it was condemned. Forty-five days... Exactly. Forty-five days passed, and council said, okay, we're gonna send them a letter, tell them, you know, we're moving forward with the process. And, and that, you know, lit fire on it.
That's an example, though, that, that the building was condemned, yet the people repaired it.
Right, yeah.
So they, they saw, you know, that it was worth repairing, and they fixed it. So again, you got a, you got a gray line there as to what, I mean, and I also think about, some of these properties that we're talking about are what we live in. You've got people living in it. So now, that creates another whole set of problems. And if you go to a owner, and say it was an owner, and you said, "These are blight situations that you need to fix." And most of them, if they don't ignore you completely, are gonna look at it and say, "I can't do that, I can't afford it." So what do we do? Do we kick them out of the house?
Now, with spot blight abatement, you cannot take by eminent domain a habited property unless it's been condemned.
Now, is that what the case was with the house across from Dollar General? Beside the Bams? Wasn't he living in that house?
Relied.
He was, and it was condemned. It was a dangerous building, and it was, I mean.
But the process we had to go through because of that is a big one. And regardless of what people thought about us kicking a poor man out of his house, honest to God, the building, the house was in such bad shape, he could have easily got killed in there. So we didn't even wanna go in it. The building inspector didn't wanna go in it. And then there again, when he condemns it and walks away, I don't understand that. All I'm seeing is, you're the one that condemned it. I'm not expecting them to do anything, but I want them to tell us, "Here's what you need to do. Here's your steps, and you need to do them, and do them later." But I can't, I can't get anybody to do that.
Could we, could we put a, have a form letter state, you know, what it is? And then he, he signs off on it, we, we print it out?
Who's he?
Building inspector.
I don't know.
What we have done before is he'll write a report to the town, and then I usually take his report, and we have a form letter that we use, and I wave signs off on it that way. But at least with the prior building inspectors, they have said, you know, "This is what I'm gonna do, but you're responsible for sending out the notices."
And you know, when he, when he hands you that report, then it's your baby, in my opinion. And that's kind of what they do, they walk away. They say, "All right, you asked me to look at it, and I did. And here it is, here's what I'm telling you, fix it." And it's a big problem, it's a big problem. All right, well, with that in mind, you and I will continue to discuss this, and we'll, we'll come up with, it's come up the game later. We can look it before the committees and, and let them digest it. And all, it's all gotta go through legal.
Test it, yeah.
Because there's certain, even, even going back to this landlord thing that we're talking about, rental properties, you better get a ducks to roll on that before we start going in. And again, I'm gonna walk in and say, "You're not, you're not renting this place." You know, because I don't like this particular thing. Whether I'm right or wrong, it may or may not, but certain people, who, who gives you the authority to do that? Are you, are you a contractor? Well, why do you feel that way? I mean, this is what's gonna happen, and they gonna fight it.
Now, Mayor, the, the last thing on that, did we want the town attorney to look into the land bank program and get the specifics?
No, we can do it. Now, I, I was looking at it, not, I was looking at the different one, yeah, let me do that, yeah.
Okay.
All right, is there any other continuing business?
Uh, we do, it's July, so it is time for us to update the comprehensive plan. Usually Wade and I get together on that and bring a report. Unfortunately, I am without her. Yes, the community center was broken into, and my computer was stolen.
Stolen.
Yes. It has been recovered.
Is it still working?
I don't know, because it's in evidence. I have a feeling it's probably wiped. I mean, I went to identify it, and I could only look at a couple of things in the time I had. But I do have the comprehensive plan on the flash drive, so all is not lost. I just don't know exactly which version is the last. But Wade and I will work on that, and then we'll bring it to you. I'll probably say, once I have a computer again, I will email everybody for input, and then we'll go from there.
Appeal.
But we'll... But we'll, we'll admit, right? You stuck in your mouth here before you asked that, it's too late now.
Colonel, Colonel, they do, they do stuff like that.
That's one of the hard feels.
All right, let me tell you something, that is an excellent comprehensive plan. So Wendy, I would actually encourage you and Reverend Bradley to read that. It's a good chance, it's well done, this council. Many of the members of this council put that together, what, many years ago, I guess? How many years ago now?
It's a five-year plan, so we're probably on about four years.
Okay, but it's a good, it's a good plan, it's well thought out. You guys deserve accommodations for...
And we really have accomplished a lot of it over a period of time.
But it's a good benchmark.
It's a good exercise to make yourself feel like you've done something, and also to keep your goals in mind.
It is online also, so you can get it to crochet. All right, any other continuing business? Move on to new business, do we have any new business?
I, I have one thing. We have had another one of our HEAL committee meetings today, and this is some low-hanging proof that I would like to request, and I'll be glad to provide the tips, that on our utility bills once a month, that we print just a little tip for healthy eating, living. And I can, again, once I have my computer back in operation, I can do some research on those, and I'll just, I'll just give it a year's worth, or maybe a bunch, and let Tiffany or whoever is interested in picking it out and putting it on there. I don't know how many characters, so they'd be real short.
Cut, outstanding, let's move.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just one piece of new business. Wrapping up my six-year tenure as chairman of the economic development committee, you should have in your packets, and you should receive via email, a resolution identifying the economic development priorities and establishing an incentive program. And I'll read it, as I'm sucking on the meat.
Well, I got a question for you.
Sure.
Because I've got some questions for some other folks. But isn't this a reaffirmation of what we already got in the comprehensive plan? And if, if it's not in the comprehensive plan, should this be placed in the comprehensive plan? That one that's you have here.
It absolutely should be placed in the comprehensive plan, and this would make a, give us the, make it more formal for the comprehensive.
Now, the other question that was always made is, should we put this in committee first, so committee can look at it, have a chance to, basically, look at it a little longer? Because most of us just got this on therapy.
Son.
You said what?
Son.
Sorry, all right.
I was right.
Okay, well, what's emails, well?
I'm all having a few.
Just saying. Because, well, the individual mentioned comprehensive plan, he's, may, I need this quick piece to come up, too, and I'd true, actually, if you, if you have no objections, if we could table it or not?
Absolutely, let's go ahead and do that. I will also point out, though, on this written version, and it's in the emails as well, under the resolve further, it says that the crew town council instructs the town manager, strike the word instructs and replace it with work with. Eliminate some of the burden on the town manager. And then, the point number five, report regularly to the crew town council on his progress, strike point number five. So essentially, it would be a joint effort by council and town staff, rather than...
Than the mayor.
Than the mayor. But just to quickly go over, since we're not going to vote on today, it basically establishes six priorities for economic development. Access to healthy, affordable food, access to affordable, competitive broadband, access to public and affordable private transportation, access to skilled workforce training, access to quality health care, access to natural gas and renewable energy, and those are the six. And then essentially, working together to establish some sort of an incentive program for businesses that provide that sort of, those, within those industries.
Now, I have, I have a question on your broadband.
Yes.
Also, because this came up, somebody else threw out. Broadband, I don't know...
Wondering why these questions were directed?
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know, but...
Okay.
We won't do it in person.
The broadband, how do we get broadband in? I mean, how does that happen? It's usually not, or a business, a business normally does it, right? I mean, the people that provide the service. We're not Richmond, we're not even far north of the university there.
There are resources available. Mid-Atlantic broadband, I believe, helps provide what they call the last mile. We can also provide, we'll look at different incentives for, or we're making an active effort to reach out to some of these businesses for providing the last mile.
Where would I, where would I find a list of these businesses?
Which ones?
So I'm not a broadband, I'm not an IT guy. Anybody that provides broadband, if I wanted to write a letter to these people, how would I find the list?
I wonder if I was at first, if they could fix it for service or...
My first step would be to reach out to Mid-Atlantic broadband, and they can help you with that. For broad lists, the FCC would probably have.
So what you're saying is, we've got capability to get it, in group, broadband? It's available, would they come?
Well, we currently have some broadband, but it's not competitive. It's essentially like...
So it's there.
And there is fiber that runs along the railway on the other side of town that doesn't, isn't, we don't have a last mile for.
So what do you kind of do, find a company to come in there and offer?
Right, so this would essentially establish six priorities for economic development.
Right.
Six different industries that we think are the most important for our economic development efforts, that provide the most basic services for economic development. And either solicit those companies, or if someone comes in and says, "I want to open up a grocery store," we have a already established list of incentives that we can, we can offer to them.
How about the natural gas? We don't want that. We don't have any way to get it now, hopefully.
Not yet.
That's half a million dollar.
I understand.
It's right now, right now it's half a million.
Right.
Next, next month, it might be six hundred thousand.
Okay. So each of these is its own issue, and is more complicated than simply offering an incentive. But offering an incentive is a tool in our toolbox for economic development. And having an incentive program already established, which I believe is also in our comprehensive plan, that we will establish a, an incentive program for.
I don't have a problem with an incentive, but I think it depends on who you talk to. And with the question...
Yeah, but the question is what kind of incentive?
See, like.
That's what I was thinking.
Food, Food Lion was offered incentive, and they were coming.
Big.
And, you know, they weren't, they hadn't cost to tell anything, they just were not collecting any of that for a while. So, yeah, there's some things we can hope about, about.
Sure, but understanding what those are in having a.
One of the issues we've had in the past too, was that, um, governments were giving away land over in the industrial park, and that new business, or local businesses that wanted to expand could not get access to that land because they were already here, so it was, it was this unfair, this unfairness that was perceived.
Yeah, but they, yeah, but they jumped and gone too fast on all that stuff, too.
Okay, good. And I do mention expanding business somewhere here. So it's not just limited, so it's, so say if A J wanted to expand, we would look at different incentive programs for, for that sort of thing as well.
All right, good, any other new business? Do you know other bu- new business, are there points of personal privilege, specifically?
I would just encourage, uh, anyone who wants to attend, but especially our newly elected, to go to the B M L newly elected officials' day enrichment next week, next.
I would love to, but I work Saturdays. I have to really, um, choose my Saturdays off very carefully, because that's one of our busiest days of the week, so.
Okay, makes sense.
I, I would love to, if they offered online, I'd do it, but, um, it's hard for me to.
Right, man.
On Saturday.
Okay, that's all I got.
All right, just able.
Still got the same request I had.
Of lights?
No, drop boxes. Need to light a fire under the V dot, because I'm telling you, green, the streets get flooded.
I don't know who to talk to, I'm trying.
I, I, I got the same problem with work, I like to blade, 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 uh, but they need to get up there and clean the drop box.
What, what's, who's the girl we're talking to today?
Smith.
I tried, I tried her before. All right, I'll be, in, in fact, I need to, I'll call.
I don't know, would you find that would not support us on the place?
Shep, I think the guy running now, and they call him Shep.
No, we talk about his boss.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, don't you have a problem?
No, but we talk about Miss Smith.
That, that's it.
Major problem, that road flood, if somebody hits it.
Which road you told them that's?
Four sixty.
Four sixty, okay, right.
Four sixty, I mean, the last two times it's raining.
Well, we'll get in touch with the, the Brian.
It's always been a problem right there, westerns. But, uh, last two times it's raining real hard, major water back up there, I don't know what you do about that one, but these other drop boxes, you ride and look at them. Most of them have trash and everything else in them, uh, north west end across from Baldwin's, and it's piles of sand in the gutter where the water's supposed to run. It's full of sand, where's the water gonna run down the street? I don't know about your police house, but I don't like work wrecks, and that's, somebody's gonna seriously get hurt with this road.
You just don't want, you just don't wanna get wet, that's all it is.
I remember they used to come through about twice a year and just dig it out, you have them out there.
We, we actually got ignored, they told us, when we started to have meetings with them, they told us that, that, uh, they kinda ignored the crew for a while, um, because we weren't screening them. So we started screening them, but.
I just, for, for safety, I, I thought I was serving now.
Um, ask everybody to notice the great, big planners out in front of the library, did you see them when you came in?
I didn't pay attention to my husband.
Well, because we haven't planted.
Can we start a pool, and how long they gonna last?
Well, we'll see.
That's my next question.
I, I noticed him.
No, they won't.
Wendy, any comments, this is, uh, this is your opportunity to say something that, in case we didn't cover it during the meeting.
Um, no, I'm good.
Welcome aboard, yes, you are good, that's why you're here.
Thank you.
All right, glad to have you, all right, with that in mind, we have no need for the, for a executive session, do we have any public comments? No more public comments, therefore, I'll entertain a motion in the jury.
Make a motion in the jury.
Executive. Executive, all the way to say, all right.